Okay. What's that? Open meeting order? Jill Bernard?
Here.
Michelle Allen?
Here.
Craig Young is here. Melissa Goodfley?
Here.
Lloyd Johnson?
Here.
Please join me in my pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do we have any open meeting form requests? Maggie? Any? Craig?
And on addition to the agenda, consent agenda or the addition of the special meeting minutes for April 18th. You should have gotten copies of those. Add those to... Any other changes to the agenda?
Hearing nine, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second?
I'll second.
Jill?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
I vote aye. Lloyd?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
Motion carries five vote. Consent agenda discussion?
Wendy? Are all the adopt signs, adopt card signs up?
Think there's one left for the guys to put up in Pheasant Hills.
And is it like sixty boxes sign?
No, that was... That was four signs, I think, that we had changed. That was the change from this park available to the ones that they had. Yeah, and I think it was either four or five signs.
Anything further? Motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. I'll second.
Michelle?
Aye.
I vote aye. Lloyd? Lawson?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Motion carries five vote for the consent agenda. Wright County Sheriff's Department?
Good evening.
Evening, how are you?
Good.
Good to see you here.
Want me to step up?
Sure.
I don't have much. I just did a quick number crunching type thing. My number is probably a little bit different than what you got because I had an extra day or two. I guess the most common thing is kind of a suspicious person type call. Couple domestics, couple more vehicle accidents. Couple site issue calls. I think everything else is pretty much the norm. Is monthly, monthly. I don't know if you guys have any further questions?
Concern on the vandalism of the parks and some of the issues? No prepared movement or if there's any ideas on that?
Not that I'm aware of. I know we've been at the parks. It's one of those things where you can try as hard as you can, but there's several... There's several parks and you have to miss it by twenty minutes and it gets gone. But we're going to continue to hammer on the parks and try to be as visible as we can.
Appreciate it. Anything else?
How often are you going to tell us?
Per shift?
Per day.
Per shift, so it's daily shift?
So like right now, it's all bits out, you know, three o'clock?
Well, I don't start until six thirty.
Okay. Because it's six to two, right?
Six thirty to two thirty. I split time between here and Waverly. I spend the majority of that split here because it's... There's more going on. I'm not in Waverly very much, but I just be hard to be a specific hour later. Per day, because it kind of varies. Some days I spend seven hours here. Some I can't.
So when you're here and you see kids in the parks or in the neighborhood or... Are we just kind of patrolling or are we making contact or...
I can't speak for others, but I've stepped in the park and played basketball with kids before. I don't know what the others do when they're here. But sometimes it's just a drive-by, just so people are aware that, oh, there are kids here.
Sometimes that's not...
Most of the time it is.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Glad you're here. Thank you. Okay. Number eight, move on to monthly activity reports. Jill, do you want to kick that off?
Yeah, sure.
Hey, you want me to go again?
Uh, no, I can say after. So I attended a park management meeting that was held May 2nd. I attended the April 25th meeting, which was the Board of Fueling Equalization. There was an EDA meeting and a town hall meeting. I attended the Beyond Yellow Ribbon event, the 5K that took place. That's Saturday prior.
And ran very well.
And ran very fast, very fast. Attended the planning and zoning meeting. Attended the EDA meeting, personnel meeting. That might cover it. I did not attend Montrose Days. The one that should have been this past Sunday, it was Mother's Day, so that's been pushed to the fall. This coming Sunday, so I'll attend that one. And I think Melissa went on her behalf, she didn't broke us out of time.
Michelle?
I attended council meetings for several, planning and zoning as well. Helped out with this 5K, which was a very big success. EDA. I did talk with Montrose Days committee. Took a volunteer one who did that, not much which I'm not there, but we'll get it next time. And the PAC meeting, which is the Parent Advisory Committee of School. And they had their carnival coming up, so there was a lot of discussion on the carnival. I would certainly maybe double it if possible. I think that's about it.
I just got a ton of meetings. City Personnel Committee meeting, the special meetings for review of public works in City of Prezzer. Beyond Yellow Ribbon 5K events, took 5K for heroes, it was fantastic event, well attended. Up about forty from last year, I think it was?
Yes.
Okay. So excellent, so it's growing and good things coming out of there and good support for the veterans. Two union negotiation meetings, the Board of Equalization Evaluation Tax Meeting. Town Hall meeting, which would better attended this time, I appreciate that. Chamber of Commerce meeting and a special workshop for just now. For the semi parting. On the other side, I did University of Scouting and taught youth for youth leadership. Went to the Beyond Yellow Ribbon meeting, VFW meeting. Involved in the feed program for the produce drop. PAC meeting for Montrose and their graduation ceremony for the crossover to the troop. Did a veterans assistance move with Beyond Yellow Ribbon. And helped out with an eagle project, which planted at twelve apple trees for a community garden in the parks, in Land Park, North Ridge and Hill Street. And they always make me shovel dirt. I don't know why, but they do. So, that was kind of my night.
All right. Let's see, I did go to the Montrose Days meeting last month for Jill. Council meeting. I don't remember which one it was, it was at the city hall. The personnel, exactly the personnel.
And the special?
The special meeting, yeah. Yep, yep. We have that here too. The town hall meeting, the Board of Appeal to Equalization volunteer meeting. We did have a Beyond Yellow Ribbon special meeting with the 5K and then obviously also the 5K. I helped out with scouting for food on one of the days. And... That was it.
And council meetings and special meeting workshop. And personnel meeting and negotiations. I did miss an EDA meeting this month in town hall.
Any updates on Montrose?
Um, I love the April one, no. There was, it was, I don't even know what it was. Yeah, there was only like three people there and it was pretty... They were just working on stuff that they had worked on. It was a month before I got...
The get around and turn back for events, there's no meeting, no? And leave. And send it to the best of the applications for meetings.
Yes, yes, I know, I have the papers here, that's all right.
I know that they mentioned that on too, that they're not going to, uh, list your tracks. And doing just fireworks.
Yep, so yeah, they're kind of looking at some other options for... Because we're not going to have a carnival, to see what's, is that's effective, what, I mean, what are they doing?
So.
No, they didn't have told that at all.
So it's talked about in the court?
Yeah, I think that was the last time I heard about it too. So I'm guessing that there, the state is probably moving forward, we just don't have any updates.
Do you have until, he has one year?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, we have a certain one.
Speaking of mics, not...
Keep your mics out of the scene. We are not making happen here. You can't hear anything. Okay. We're talking about Montrose Days, that they are not having a carnival this year. Just fireworks. And that at the volunteer meeting, they talked about how they're proceeding with... Two years ago, you know, the carnival that no show? And the committee was on the $2,500? They have, starting, I believe in October, they have one year to start paying back all the cities that were involved in that carnival for, I don't remember the name of the...
It's through the state, the county's office.
Yes.
It was tied to them. So all the money over there and then it disperses.
It disperses with ten? Maybe ten percent?
Something like that.
So they are going to eventually get reimbursed?
Hopefully.
For, yeah.
They're not counting on those funds.
Yeah, it's...
Well, no one's got to help.
Yeah.
So.
Right, yes. So. But yeah, that was, I mean, there was a couple that going on in April. It's a little bit different again. So they have, they do have, some of these are coming up Thursday and Saturday though.
It's Minnesota.
I don't remember. Minnesota's on Saturday. Someone we've had before. But I can't remember the name.
Okay, Maggie Brereton. All right, let's move on, Maggie Administration.
Mayor Council under administration, first item is the city clerk trigger cell phone. At the April 18th Personnel Committee meeting, there was discussion and a decision to suggest to the council that a cell phone be purchased for the city clerk trigger. This would help with communication between the council and the city clerk. That's right.
Did we get a cost on that? What it would cost to add phone?
We did not.
Mayor Council, if I could speak on that. Been in charge of the cell phone plan for several years now. And we follow our state contract through Verizon. And all the phones are free. And it's a certain monthly charge. There's five phones.
About thirty-three to thirty-five dollars a month per phone.
Yeah, something like that. Which is unlimited data, everything is unlimited.
And with that phone, it'll have accessibility to everything, like all the emails, all that kind of stuff?
That's correct. Unlimited.
Okay, any other discussion? Motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve getting a cell phone for the city clerk trigger.
Second? Second. I vote aye. Lloyd? Aye. Melissa?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Motion carries five vote. Next item, the omnibus transportation bill.
Mayor Council, at front of you is a resolution. It is a resolution that supports dedicated state funding for street streets. And you all know funding for street maintenance projects can be expensive. The League of Minnesota Cities has developed a model resolution that supports an omnibus transportation funding bill that provides additional state funding for city streets for cities that are under 5,000 people in population. There is a fund already set for cities that are over 500. It's the municipal state aid, but cities under 5,000 do not qualify. So I just am presenting this resolution. It's been passed by over 200 other cities. It would, upon approval, it would be sent to the League of Minnesota Cities as well as state representatives showing our support to get additional funding for the maintenance of our streets.
Discussion? Motion to approve 2016-10?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2016-10, a resolution supporting dedicated state funding for city streets. I'll second.
Lloyd?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
I vote aye. Motion carries five vote.
Mayor Council at front of you is the compensation study proposal from Abdo Beck and Myers. As mentioned previously, this... This review would help staff or educate staff on pay equity reporting. It would also review our current job descriptions and pointing system that we have in place. It would also establish pay ranges by studying current positions against other cities of similar size, market conditions and market comparables. Staff is looking for approval. The overall goal is to help with the pay equity report through the comparable work study. The... Or the plan is proposed to be about $7,500. There was some discussion as if it could get down lower. I did talk to Abdo, they said that... That they weren't able to lower that even if staff were to do that actual pay equity portion of it. They said that it would be part of their process no matter what. I did talk to somebody, another contact, that said that they might be able to help for less. But when I explained to her exactly what we were looking for, they said that that would... What we're doing would be a little more comprehensive than what she could handle.
Discussion?
And you looked at Lake of Cities for training?
Yeah, I have, I mean, I have looked at resources, I have looked at the League of Minnesota Cities. I do, I have read through all their information. I just think like the actual comparable word is something that I believe would be better if an outside company looked at. And what they would do is actually compare our jobs to people with, for other positions that are similar. They would see if our pointing system matches state law. I mean, that's something that I couldn't do. I just feel like having somebody who knows all the state laws, who's done this before. I feel like it would, they would be able to develop the pay ranges that we're looking for. Just to see if we're actually where we're at or where we're supposed to be. So I have, I mean, and that's why I did ask them if we could cut out the pay equity portion because the league does offer good information on pay equity. But they said as part of this plan, they wouldn't be doing the pay equity no matter what. And so they wouldn't be able to cut much off of it, of the price.
And I like, I like the fact that we're doing, I hope side look to be a third party review.
Do you know if we've ever outsourced it before or have we always done it in-house?
We've always done it in-house. Never done outsourced.
Yep, yep.
Sharon, you got any comments on it? Pardon? You got any comments on this? Did you work on this before?
I have.
Twice. Correct.
Couple times, yes.
And then I did talk with a surrounding city who has offered help. That they would be willing to help with that process and...
I mean, I think that they're able to help with the pay equity part. I think if, I mean, if what we want is an outside look at the process that we've done, I don't think that it would be helpful. I mean, because we've already done it. I think, I mean, we have like the structure in place. I just think it would be helpful to have an outside look from somebody who specializes in this to say, is this pointing system accurate? Are our employees in the right pay range? Is this comparable to neighboring cities? And, or other cities that are our size and make up? The pay equity part is just kind of the extra piece to that.
And the rest of it that you're looking for is like job description and all that kind of stuff, right?
No, we already have the job description, it's completed. This would just be them looking at our job descriptions, setting the point system or looking at the current system that we have in place and seeing if it's accurate.
And then doing the regional study to determine if our pay is consistent with other similar jobs and of similar type.
Which you can do all of that online through the Lake of Minnesota Cities. There is, there is a...
The problem with the Lake of Minnesota Cities is there's based on Minneapolis and city hall.
Well, that's, there's one that's also based on statewide.
But can I interject you? The one that's on the Lake of Minnesota Cities doesn't give you the job descriptions. For instance, my job title is deputy clerk, but I do finance. If you go to other cities, a lot of deputy clerks are actually what Anna does. So what we're looking for is to get our city set to where it should be based on what we really do. I know Milesello has done this, Elverville, Hanover. Maple Lake has done it twice in the last maybe five or six years. So a lot of the cities are doing it to try to get it in line so that they can go forward from here and get their salaries set and...
Right, and I totally understand doing it, but right now it's not in our budget. To do that.
We didn't budget for it in 2016, but there's money in our general fund that could take care of it.
Yeah, and my concern too is that, I mean, you know, we don't have to pay for it every three years when we're supposed to do it. I mean, we can certainly keep doing it in-house, but I think every once in a while, when this comes up, it is good to have an outside look because we could be missing laws. We could be missing key things that could seriously affect the USA, cause potentially there was some liability. I think every so often when this does come up, it's not a bad idea to use a third party.
It gives it that transparency for a third party look.
So three years from now, I mean, great, we can do it in-house and, you know, I would assume for the next several cycles we could, but...
Which I totally get your points, but then come November when we do the budget, we should set it for the budget? And what do we have to do?
Next, the pay equity report is due January 2017. And so we wouldn't be able to do it next year.
Further discussion? Have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the compensation study proposal with Abdo Beck and Myers.
Second?
I'll second.
Melissa?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Michelle?
No.
I vote aye. Lloyd?
No.
Motion carries three, two. City Online Courses?
Mayor Council, I'm just bringing the online courses for the Lake of Minnesota Cities back to you. Just wondering if we can approve $200 more for these courses. Just an explanation. At the last council meeting, it was approved to spend up to $500 on online classes for commissioners and the council if they desired through the Lake of Minnesota Cities. I think there's courses in human resources, zoning, and another topic. We did have a great deal of interest. We're currently at about, close to 500 in already. And so it's going over with the interest that I've gotten additionally in the last week. And so I'm just wondering, I think in order to cover everybody who's interested, it would, it would take another $200.
Discussion?
How many members are looking to let from the commissions?
I believe we have the entire planning commission except one. I have two council. And I have a couple staff.
Further discussion? Motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve up to $200 additional for online courses for training.
Second?
I'll second.
Jill?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
I vote aye. Lloyd?
Aye.
And Melissa?
Aye.
Motion carries five vote to approve additional $500 for online training. Okay. Open quarters.
Your name is Mayor Council. We have on the agenda tonight, back on April 24th, on Sunday, about 10:30 in the morning, our wastewater treatment plant sustained a direct lightning strike to the office building. With that being said, we have been pretty much on the edge every time we hear a little clap of thunder. So I say it never strikes twice, but you never know that either. Just giving you the information, we were there approximately eight hours on Sunday trying to get everything back up and running. We've got some specialized electronic equipment that gives us the availability to run orders at different speeds and places with the flows and whatnot. We spent a significant amount of time bypassing all that equipment in order to keep the plant running in compliance. We have contacted Lake of Minnesota Cities, which is our insurance agent. They came out, took several, probably forty, fifty photographs of the associated damage. If you've ever been involved in a lightning strike, you get one thing out and you chase it down the line and you find something else that's burned out. And we're currently experiencing that right now. Hopefully we're at the scene lighting at the tunnel, so to speak. And right now we're looking at, oh, probably roughly twenty-five, or yeah, 25,000 damages that were sustained that morning. And everything minus the deductible should be going under insurance.
On that note, that's also the place where our backup server is. And it's been having a few problems trying to back up. It couldn't catch up, so they brought it up last Thursday to city hall and ran backups for a day and took it back down Friday, and then we got a few more error messages. So we're hoping it's just still trying to get everything caught up. But they're keeping an eye on it, so.
Okay, Personnel Committee. Jill?
Oh, you're making me do this?
Yes.
All right. This is for March 21st. You're gonna have one for April? You could have said you were going to take my... We could say you both will take my... I think so. No, I think the minutes are ready to be just made. Great, I'm...
Yeah.
Here's over there. We discussed employer reviews. Anna, Jason, Dan, Wayne, and the second Dan. We had quite an extensive discussion on our, the hours survey that was posted on what the proper avenue was looking forward. I think we decided to leave it out on Survey Monkey and within the next newsletter, we'd actually post the full survey so people could just turn it in. Let me correct that correctly, please. That was my understanding. There was discussion on the fire department officer pay. There hasn't been a raise for the officers in quite some time. I know Kevin had gone around trying to get comparable wage, wages of local communities, and it's just kind of all the way forward. Everybody pays a little differently. So, getting comparable worth on that is difficult. I think he's going back and doing the best he can.
We'll hear from him later.
We'll hear from him later. There was other discussion on the emergency management position and what we wanted with that going forward. I think we're still in limbo at this point as far as what we're gonna do. Triplets, we should go with fire department. I know staff has some concerns on that route. Other business was general, talking about the town hall meeting that was gonna be discussed. Conference plan. I think that was voted.
Discussion? Motion to approve the minutes as amended for April 18th.
I'll make a motion to approve the April 18th first with all committee meeting minutes.
Second?
I'll second.
Michelle?
Aye.
I vote aye in Lloyd?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Motion carries by vote. Holiday lights?
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, the current city holiday streetlight decorations are in need of replacement, and Home Works asked for Highway 12 Task Force would provide some input on design for new holiday lights for Highway 12. The committee narrowed it down to four and then placed a survey on Survey Monkey for resident input. As of today, we did have sixty-eight individuals that provided input with the top two choices being the center two that are displayed on the street and Nativity Star and the Holly Candle Decoration. This is the same company that has provided our banners for all the seasons. The brackets are included along with the decorations. It includes LED lights, which have a three-year warranty, and then the decorations themselves have a six-year warranty. With shipping, the total cost would be $5,415.71. So, the recommendation from Highway 12 and then from the EDA is to purchase five of each of those two decorations, the Nativity Star and the Holly Candle, for that price.
Where does this money come from?
Looking at the budget, it would come from the street.
Discussion? Motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of the new holiday lights.
I'll second.
I vote aye in Lloyd?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Motion carries by vote. Planning Commission?
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, included in your packet, just for your information, our minutes from the April 20th, 2016 Planning Commission meeting goes from pages sixty-eight through seventy-eight of your packet. And that provides a little background on an item that we have for action due this evening. So, unless you have questions on the minutes, I'll move on to item number two.
Need to approve the minutes?
Plan Commission, I'll approve. So, the action items due this evening are up to the annual election of commission officers. Now, this was brought before the City Council last meeting table. Chapter 23 of the City Code of Health and Process for appointing officers to the Planning Commission. And with that, each position shall be approved by the City Council. The recommendations coming forward from the Planning Commission are Chairperson Cory Dewitt, Vice Chair Chuck Smallwood, and Secretary Catherine Nyhurter. We're asking the Council's endorsement to those officers this evening.
Discussion?
So, I guess, we, so, look, it appears that these initial votes were taken on February 17th, 2006. But I thought in our March 16th, or our March 14th council meeting, we had asked the Planning Commission to revote. Did they not revote?
They revoked it. So, the council asked for a revote for the Vice Chair and the Secretary position.
Okay.
And so, those were the positions that we revoked.
Yeah, okay. And then, it appears, now, correct me if I'm wrong, that for the Chairperson, there's only four votes. Was somebody missing?
That was before Tracy Grinow was lifted?
Okay.
Beyond the commission? No, there's, there are five since that vote took place.
So, there was four people, there was four votes.
Yeah, the first time.
Right. And then the second time, there was five people and five votes.
Any further discussion? Motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the Planning Commission officers that are voted by the Planning Commission.
Second?
I'll second.
Lloyd?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Michelle?
No.
I vote aye in, motion carries four-one.
The next item under the Planning Commission action for the Council's consideration is a request for amendment to the planned unit development for lots 1 through 26 and lots 29 through 32, Lot 1, Forest Creek. Resolution is enclosed in your packet, Resolution 2016-14, as well as a draft development agreement for your consideration. To provide you with a little background, we do have Don Johnson here with Paxmar LLC, the applicant for the request. This property is located in an area that is owned R1, single-family residential. It does have a conditional use permit for a planned unit development overlay. In 2004, that was an approved PUD to allow reduced setbacks with the intent to have a joined townhomes or a shared property line. The request before you is to allow detached townhomes as well as retain the option of having attached townhome units. The request has been seen by the Planning Commission at a public hearing on April 20th. We also have a letter from the homeowners association approving the proposed amendments. City Engineer Justin Nassan's presence tonight has reviewed and has a couple suggested conditions. One is that the water service curb stops be located outside driveway locations unless approved by the city engineer and staff, and that also notation be included in the development agreement acknowledging that it is a private road that these homes, majority of the homes are located on, and it will be maintained by the homeowners association. So, with that, there are two style of townhomes that were presented. A Hickory-style townhome that is from 1,300 square feet to 1351 square feet plus an unfinished lower level, and an option for a three-season porch, as well as a second St. Henry-style townhouse. The Planning Commission has unanimously recommended that the City Council approve the PUD amendment with some conditions that are notated within the resolution from pages 82 and 83 of your packet. Those conditions are the filing of revised covenants by the landlord, the service stop located outside the driveway locations unless approved by the city engineer, acknowledged by the applicant and homeowners association that the existing cul-de-sac road is a private street and opposed to remain as such. And the Forest Creek homeowners association is responsible for street maintenance, including the not limited to snow falling and pavement maintenance, and contingent upon execution of a development agreement with the deposit of required escrow funds in terms of people leaving the landscaping, grading, et cetera. So, I don't know if you would act on that first and then on the development agreement, or if you'd like me to note a couple of proposed changes to the development agreement prior to your action.
Both changes first?
Okay. The development agreement is found on pages 93 through 96 of your packet. There might be minor tweaks to this. It will be noted as a second degree, a second amendment to the development agreement. When this was originally applied as a PUD, there was a development agreement, and then there was an amendment in March of 2007. So, it was to be a second amendment. The language proposed before you, you have number eight, it references the private street. As stated on the third line, it states that we understand that the developer and Forest Creek homeowners association are responsible for the street maintenance, et cetera. We would take up the developer's responsibility and leave that solely with the homeowners association. And then number fifteen addresses warranty of curbs. That language being reworded to note that they are only providing a warranty on any curbing, removal, and repair for driveway accesses that occur after to the, on or before 2000, on or after 2016, excuse me. So, not the entire curbing, but rather just anything that's replaced. And then, working with our city attorney, if there are any minor tweaks, nothing substantial, but if there are words that are amended, just to clarify. Any questions? We have to answer those. Otherwise, the two action items are approval of the resolution and approval of the development agreement.
So, I have a concern on the private street portion about completely removing the developer from that section. Only because if you guys are in their building and you're tearing up the street, why is it our responsibility?
Right, good question. Right now, the, as the applicant, we are also part of the homeowners association, so the requirement to repair would be the person who does the damage. So, there's kind of one and the same in that we're not totally separate from the HOA. We would have still the obligation to repair any damage that we created. So, home builder, I guess it's a little bit different. We're not developing anything, we're just doing the build-out. But if you wreck what you're building on, you're going to have to repair it. So, I think that's the distinction, is that there's really no development happening here. There is a plan to add home styles and build-out, so... That would be, I guess, the wordsmithing that the city attorney might look at, so...
And if they do do some damage, you're gonna enforce the legislature?
Correct. I mean, it's kind of one of the, this is a unique situation in that, in essence, the applicant is also a home builder for the purposes of the amendment.
No, you see, the government, the homeowners association, strictly going to be...
Well, right now, it's already self, it's already being managed by the homeowners, of which we are members, and then, which, I should say, Forest Creek Mon LLC is a member. And then, they will pay dues as the, as the homes are completed at a different rate and style that the management will set. This allows it to be run more efficiently, we hope in the future, take pressure off of the existing residents who are doing double duty as being their own governing board. And the more homes and residents that there are, of course, there are teams you have to vote for it and then, and you have other people that will step up as, as all of you step up and do your duty.
Why does that street?
Right now, it was, I believe, thirty-two feet curb-to-curb?
What's normal?
Not that.
Huh?
Not that.
No, I was thinking it was around sixty.
Well, the right-of-way on a city street is at sixty, but the actual pavement surface in the middle of the right-of-way is anywhere from twenty-eight to thirty-four.
Yeah, thirty, it varies depending on the paper road, but thirty-two is a fairly standard face-to-face curb width of the actual street itself.
We're thinner than that. I'm gonna guess we're on that twenty-eight side. I'll say we're on the part of the association.
Why does that street out there rock with it's a problem? The circle road or the main one? Well, going through the townhouses and... All of that one. I think that's old forty-four, and I think that's pretty narrow. See, that's one thing about, you know, these associations, you know, if they go belly up or whatever.
We're not going belly up. We quite literally can't, because if we go belly up, you can't sell your house. That's the problem right now, so...
Oh, really? You'll leave the house empty?
Suppose you can afford clothes on that? And not be able to buy...
That's my only question, is every time we kind of deviate or lose something, it seems to always come back to you.
We're not deviating from the plan though currently. Like, the road that was built has been built for how many years? We're not adjusting that plan. It's just building single-family versus twin home is the only difference. It has nothing to do with the road itself. That was already in place since 2004.
But those people that live there aren't gonna call us? Get, call them off? You guys are gonna call them back?
We have to. By association.
That's kind of the reason it was put in there. It really isn't, it really isn't even part of the changes of the PUD, but we simply felt staff felt it was important just for that to be open and for the future, just to make sure everybody was fully aware that that's...
It's in the covenants and the bylaws and the restrictions and everywhere other than this, apparently.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, there is one last wordsmithing that I was just catching here as I look back through. And what you have submitted in front of you, what Ms. Menard has as part of the board packet, is that, number one is actually an amended declaration to be consistent. It's not technically a revised covenant. So, if we're just trying to be consistent with what things are that were submitted, we would file the amended declaration that is then signed by the board with your approval. It's not, not really a covenant, but it's a declaration. No changes to that by from what gets submitted for legal review many weeks ago. Does that mesh with what staff would see as legal?
Yes.
Thank you. If they have to answer any questions, both the home plans submitted did have pre-approved and designed decks and porches. That's one of the problems sometimes when you submit plans with an association and a PUD. If you didn't remember that maybe there's an option and somebody would want to add that, and then you have to come back and do exactly what we're doing now. Come back through and show the home design. What we're trying to do is cover all the bases so that the remaining empty lots can have homes built out on them. And that's why staff or planning commission also retain the language that if the twin home market does in fact come back, there's still this opportunity. We do have twenty units that are on the private cul-de-sac. If you count them up, and then there's the sixteen vacant units that are on the public street of Reverend James. So, the plan that was discussed at the Planning Commission is we would start units seventeen through twenty and work in a counterclockwise fashion around the cul-de-sac. And that keeps really the activity confined in the biggest center space. And then, as we finish those twenty, we'll have a much better sense for continuing the detached townhomes back to the east or whether or not a twin home market has returned. And it would be a blank. So, I think really that was, that was done as an understanding that you do have a twin home in the kind of the middle of that North Road adjusted to the east of the gazebo and the cul-de-sac. So, really depends on how the land plan transition works. But if we didn't change the infrastructure, because that's all on the public street. Any additional questions? If they have to answer, what I can...
Any further production?
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Motion to approve 2016-14 as amended by the engineer and with any minor changes that may be pertinent from the...
and with any minor changes that may be pertinent from the legal review for Forest Creek and the declaration. And then was that second amendment to the agreement? Don't make that motion since I already said all of that. I'll make that motion. Second?
Second.
Hey, Melissa?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
I vote aye. Lloyd?
I'm still going to vote aye.
Okay. Motion carries for a vote. Thank you, you support?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. My number two, Third Street South, even the agreements. You mayor, council?
So this involves a property located at one fifty-five Third Street South, three blocks east of our current location, owned by Jeffrey and Susan Wheeler. And as I think we discussed before, the Wheeler property not only covers where their usual property line boundaries would be, but goes into the sixty-six foot wide right-of-way and on the spread of the surface, the tight surface of Third Street South. And I think when there was some capital improvement plan planning, this was found out, and I know Justin and Sean had also contributed to this item in my day. And so we found out that really the city has no, it's private drive essentially. And the city hasn't maintained it and plowing it in for years. It's a small area and of course, it dead ends right past that point. So in the future, maybe that will be extended and known. So there is potential, potential construction and acquisition to be done further along there. So it was a thought, I think, by all of us to get that cleaned up and to get the city to have actual title to that property so it can plow something that it owns and do all that stuff. Because there could be a problem with plowing an area that it doesn't own. So this right-of-way acquisition agreement was drawn up. The property owners were willing to transfer the property to the city at no charge at this time. We did, I did work with Justin and Sean to come up with the city property value for that amount of land. And that's in section four there on page one oh five of your packet. It was determined that that area is more or less worth a little bit over ten thousand dollars. And so the property owners who convey that land to the city at no charge whatsoever. However, in the future, they would like to have that ten thousand dollar amount credited towards any future assessments or anything that may, may take place there if the city needs to revamp that road. So that's section, subparagraph B there in section four. I just have an example there in the indent. If each property was assessed fifteen thousand dollars, then you would take that fifteen thousand dollar special assessment and subtract the current value of ten thousand one hundred and eighteen dollars and forty cents to get you a, to have them be assessed four thousand eight hundred and eighty-one dollars and sixty cents. That's just an example. Because there is some consideration for them to transfer the property to the city for nothing, because there is a worth on that, on that property. So that's where that comes in later on. You know, that, if nothing happens, that may never come into play. The other point that Justin reminded me of tonight is to have some sort of provision in there. I might have to add this, that if, for example, there's a project in the future and the assessment serves, say, only five thousand dollars, so the actual value of the land is higher than the assessment value, that doesn't mean that the owners that will get a payment from the city for that excess amount. The city wouldn't have to do any cash, cash payment for that. So I will, I'll include a sentence on that before this would be signed up if it's approved tonight. And then finally, on subparagraph C, there is some fees, of course, to get a survey for that legal description of what the city will own. There's some title work that needs to be done. There's some legal fees throughout the deed. And we estimated all those fees to be thirty-five hundred dollars. And so then that, those fees will basically be credited against the city property value. So it gets a little confusing, but if the value is, you know, ten thousand, ten thousand one hundred and eighteen dollars, we're going to take thirty-five hundred dollars off the top of that to basically allocate that towards our, you know, legal fees, survey fees, title fees. So going back to that assessment example that I just mentioned, if the total assessment was forty-eight hundred and eighty-one dollars against that property, after taking into account the property value credit, we would then increase that assessment by thirty-five hundred dollars to get you a hypothetical amount of eighty-three hundred and eighty-one dollars. So we wouldn't lose Justin's fees, my fees, any city fees, title fees, et cetera. And if I have a title on section five that is April eleventh, and that would be tonight if it's approved tonight, so I will change that. Otherwise, this will be, if it's approved and signed by everybody, then the deed is on page one oh nine. Which is your basic foot lane deed from the Wheeler's to the city. And it will be reported at Wright County Reporter's Office so that the city would own that chunk of street and right-of-way and be simple forever. So we wouldn't have to worry about plowing a private area anymore or doing any maintenance to a private area. So any questions we have to answer?
Do you have anything else?
Discussion? Motion to approve right-of-way acquisition agreement with the amendment for concluding any senior payoffs for estimated value of the property.
Make a motion as stated. Hold a second.
Michelle?
Aye.
I vote aye.
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Motion carries by a vote. Approved right-of-way acquisition agreement with amendments for no senior payoffs.
And you have any other questions? Probably animations coming along that we discussed.
Those have been, yeah, those have been sent, and we finally got hit back from the Woodland Township attorney. And I really, I don't think he had any significant, well, format of changes that didn't make any sense to me as to why they were used. But I sent them in.
Okay. And were we doing the solar lighting as well? Is that the other one they were working on?
Well, that's the one I think we've had. There's been, yeah, we thought that was that email that you?
Yes.
Jill, mail me on that.
The Subchair Monson is still requesting some additional changes to the development agreement that staff, and I think we need to reach consensus on where they're at with one of those. So the latest correspondence, I think, was just on Friday or Saturday.
Thank you.
Anything else for the senior committee? Park Mayor?
Good evening, Mayor. The Park and Rec meeting was called to order at five thirty on the second. Approval of amendments was approved, seconded by Moyno, three to zero. Aecunt unclaimed prize. Discussed over what to do with the unclaimed basket from the Aecunt. Decision was made by unanimous approval to do a giveaway of the summer splash with the contents of the basket. Arbor Day. The Eagle Scout project completed in the park for apple trees. There were twelve. Four in each park yield and northland and northridge. The summer splash was discussed three days. And the flyout was approved. That was made by the consul Jill Menard last year. Discuss. Banding and logo to promote consistency and recognition. The date was changed from June twenty-third to June thirtieth, from three to six. It's actually July. It's July twenty-third to July thirtieth. Well, dear, it says. Yeah, that's a misprint. Yeah, okay. Need the consul, oh, next up, and approval to use the dump tank and participants.
July thirtieth, is there some Wright County fair going on during that?
Probably, possibly.
Probably, yes.
Wait, there's no other time though?
Yeah.
So July sixteenth is the Delano Relay for Life. July twenty-third is the Rib Fest of the Beach on the River.
Yeah, and the thirtieth is a Saturday?
Yeah.
Do you think you'll get that many people, they will go to Rib Fest?
Black house.
I didn't know kids coming out there.
Just one consideration that we couldn't talk about in the Park and Rec meeting. If we do change the date, we got to change the date on our food license.
Yeah.
Or the commission does.
Is that difficult?
No.
You just got to call.
I've never done, so why do you say it's not that bad, so?
Okay.
You can just call Joel and ask him.
Um, Rib Fest really promotes kids. They have bouncing houses there, yeah, so it does draw crowds.
So it's still going to be July thirty?
I think so, I think. And then getting these two people. There's a lot of...
I still find out at the county fair after their days and stuff.
I won't be available, I'm doing a slide presentation for a veteran at the, July thirty, at the Wright County Fair. I won't be there.
So then that, the next question is, is the dump tank, would we willing to participate, obviously, or not?
I would be there.
Well, it's not tight as far as I know, it shouldn't be there. I mean, I don't see it here, so I...
We need to put them in.
I have the dump tank reserve currently right now for July thirtieth. At the cost, it's either a hundred and two or a hundred and nine dollars. I don't remember what they don't need. Twenty, hundred bucks. I'll be there. Jill?
I'll be there.
Lloyd? Not to participate in the dump tank, but it doesn't say that.
Uh, it comes with July thirtieth, because July is the thirty-fourth.
Okay.
There's like ninety-nine percent chance I'll be there, so.
You'll be there. You can just break me down.
You can just change up your umbrella, yeah.
Any staff willing to participate in the dump tank? I don't know quite a bit.
Come on, Mary.
Come on.
Bring your daughter, it can be a family filled with dead. She can hang with my crazy kids.
I'll purchase.
I'll, I'll look and see you. Free county, I. Just to make sure she doesn't have a soccer.
Three, six, yeah.
I might be able to, but I don't know.
Come on, Kevin. How about the captains and the chiefs?
I could probably get them to do it.
We're the chiefs.
You know, as you were sitting in the dump tank, I'm sure you might get a ground swell of people who might want to put you in the water.
The fire department is going to be there.
You are going to be there.
May not know. You can jump, come on.
No speedos, though. No speedo?
No speedo. Play the duck, it's you.
It's like, darn.
If I can, then you can.
Sorry, Sylvia.
Monrose Night Out discussion resulted in change of plans from the previous years. Park and Wack, Park and War. Will defer to the local neighborhoods gatherings and not to hold a gathering in the Lions Park out here. We encourage neighbors to get to know your neighbors. Please see the upcoming newsletter for additional information. Member Moyno will prepare a small article and submit it to Ann Carlson by June first.
Question is, do you want to mention my name?
It's the first to...
For you.
August.
Hold on a second, correct. Do we know if Kirby has submitted anything to the city yet?
We just don't.
Okay.
Anything to Wright County as well, or deputies come by as well? It's a great time to meet and greet for the sheriff's department, fire department, that kind of stuff. So Kevin and, and deputies should probably be involved in that. On the second, it might be a good idea to make sure we have them covering the neighborhoods. And I don't know if we have anything as far as the neighborhoods in plan of them. I know there's one plan on my neighborhood right now. But it might be good if we can kind of get an idea of where they are and if we can, you know, have a piece of where they're meant to be located.
That's what Kirby's going to, and then he's supposed to be, and then if any neighborhoods want any barricades.
Then we can do that.
And then do the context of the hill as well.
We don't pay some for Highway twelve barricades.
No big deal.
Highway twelve, I don't think we'll get the barricades.
Not on the best day.
Also, a list of neighborhoods that are participating needs to get sent to the sheriff's office so that they can put them on their list of ones to try and get people to visit.
Yep.
And if I could do a list too for the fire department, that would be helpful.
Good to go now, right?
Good. All right.
The Minnesota, Explore Minnesota, member Plume has made contact by email with the Explore Minnesota, and we were able to add events to the website for free. If we want to be in the newsletter or have a large ad, it has a cost associated. We will pursue only the free online at this time. Plume will submit Monrose Day, Summer Splash, Veterans Ceremony, and Disc Golf tournaments. And the food license we do have, but I, we have to have changed to a different.
Sean, do you want us to reach out to?
You certainly can, if you'd like.
Reach out to who?
Joy, change the date and the license? Do you want to contact?
Commission can.
I don't.
I love.
Somebody on the commission can.
Yeah, do you want to reach out to?
I'd rather that Wendy do it, because she's done it before. I don't know what I'm doing.
I can certainly do it too, it shouldn't take that.
I've done it, do you want me to do it?
I can, whatever, if you want to do it.
If you want, go ahead, you have it in the address. It's all yours.
So you're going to do it, Sean?
Sure.
Thank you. Beyond the yellow ribbon, discussion about the success of the event, and the commission can assist in the next year's events. New member application was received by city hall. Chair Henry will send a meeting with the applicant and city clerk, treasurer, clerk, treasurer, city clerk slash treasurer, Maggie McCollum, for the purpose of interviewing the applicant. I did talk to Maggie tonight, and she put messages for the lady to call up, to call her, and she hasn't returned the calls yet. Regional park update. They had to get, the Army Corps of Engineers had to have some little additional information needed to, was for, that is being provided for all intent and purpose. It appears to be go for two thousand and seventeen.
Sylvia, if I can stop you there. Justin had an update on that since the minutes were written.
I got an email on Friday from the Army that said that they resubmitted, basically I had to fill out, they wanted another inquiry done, we've done D and R.
I got an email on Friday from the Army that said that they resubmitted, basically I had to fill out, they wanted another inquiry done, we've done, DNR ordered an update, we had one done back when the original development was done, and I sent that to them originally, and they said, wow, they thought it was kind of old, they kind of ordered an updated one, and so I talked to the DNR, go get an updated letter, and DNR made me resubmit the request, basically to put it back into their queue, which takes three to four weeks to do, so I told the Army that, and they resubmitted the request back to DC, and they came back and said they approved it as is, so.
Good!
Yay!
They, it's, well, it's the way it sounds, so.
Awesome, 2017?
For 2017.
Awesome.
I don't know the dates yet, but that's gonna be the next thing on their agenda, and I kind of stressed to them, the importance that we try and get that figured out as soon as possible, because we did commit the community center for them to use, so basically, I guess right now we probably just need a hole for the whole summer until we get those dates and that book can be picked up.
Also, we need, or need coordination with the Yellow Ribbon and some other organizations, I know they will do some special things with them as well.
Yeah, there's actually a lot of work, kind of work that needs to be done for this, there's some tweaking to the plans that we need to do, we were all here today, and with solid warnings, we did end up doing solid warnings back, just kind of, kind of putting everything on hold a little bit, because I didn't want to spend any money, totally knew what was gonna happen, so, I've kind of started putting that, and that solid warning was approved by the council a few years ago, so, wasn't anything that wasn't approved, but I just kind of put it on hold, and now I'll kind of put things in motion again, so I'm gonna have some more stuff to break back with this, to you guys, to kind of get us up to speed where we need to be next time.
Terrific, huge savings for the city, huge.
Regional Park Building Project, Public Works advised that the building project was just project for this year, for storage and warehouse space, will continue to move forward with more details set in our June meeting. Grants, the grants, the commission discussed the grant the Park and Rec Commission could apply for, City Clerk Treasurer Maggie McCollum has enquired about pursuing grants. Member Plu has a list of grants that were available last year to look through, so the decision was made to have Plu and McCollum and Henry, right?
That's correct.
To schedule a meeting with Henry to determine the grants. Maps of the park, park maps, flyers and website, discussion by the commission regarding signage within the parks assigned, will consist of a city map picturing the city parks and list of the immunity each one holds. Discuss updating the flyers that the city has in the information, rec and the lobby of City Hall to make it current and accurate. The commission also discussed having the park section of the website updated as well. Public Works Sean Dirk said he will talk to Anna about the flyer.
Also on that, we may want to include that in one of our quarterly, we have quarterly newsletters, as to the parks, because I got some comments that people weren't aware of how many parks we do have, particularly during the planting project, and some of those people actually live local, so if we can push that out a little bit better, I fully agree that we need to have more visibility as to the green space that we do have. Especially with the new format where we've got some uniform notification letters, that can be a real thing to highlight the parks. So, I want to work with Maggie on that, and her process of that, and her, so Anna and Maggie, include her in that, for to support's publicizing the parks.
I think they're gonna do all that when they get together with the grants, has Plu contacted you, brought it in yet?
Well, her son, her son is leaving at four o'clock tomorrow morning to go back to the army. Okay, discussion over seniors slash middle age event regarding holding an annual senior event, and also something for those in the middle age group, lots of suggestions, but no final outcome, more discussion will be needed. If we determine it is a need within the community, agenda was set for June 6th, meeting was adjourned at 6:40.
Any further discussion? Want to approve Parker Rec minutes?
I'd like to wish to approve the recent of the Parker Rec minutes.
Really?
Can I actually pause the meeting to switch the seat?
Yep. Thanks, Sylvia. Alright, let's go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council, before you is the monthly activity report for the month of April for the Fire Department, I'd like to draw special attention to the acknowledgements, to Mindat, Wright County Emergency Manager Steve Burke, and Montrose Public Works for assistance with a chemical spill leak on April 12th. Didn't have any questions as far as the activity report goes? Moving on to number two, authorization to apply for credit card for the Fire Department through Citizens Bank, I'm looking to get a credit card, much like Sean and Maggie has, just so that getting items, it takes a step out of the whole process, what we've been doing in the past is, I pay for it with my credit card, or somebody else pays for it with cash or credit card, then we reimburse them, so it's taking that step out, and rather than opening up 20 accounts at different places and online stuff, it's just one credit card that we can use to get items, so.
Just one interjection, when you use, when you are using your credit card or a city credit card, you are not getting it tax-free, so you're paying state sales tax, that's thus why we normally charge things, I mean, or you have them invoice us whenever possible, for that simple reason. So anytime you can have them invoice you, that's what you should be doing, because that's a way you can get it tax-free.
Yes.
Or taxed out.
So credit card should be for, more so like emergency?
Online. Online, online is the big one, and most of the stuff online isn't taxed anyways, for the most part, so.
Like training?
Yeah, trainings, stuff like that, so, I mean, we would still keep our, you know, the ones that we do have tax exempt status, where we have it already set up for invoices, which is the majority of the places, but a lot of stuff is transitioning to online type stuff, the Chiefs Association is now all online, we can do it by invoice, but they prefer that it's done online, and they're trying to get rid of invoices altogether, so. And I'm, I don't have a problem with my credit card, but I'm looking further down the line, where if you have a chief that comes in after me, or someone who doesn't have disposable money sitting in there, and a bank account that they can use for that, before they get a refund from the city, just kind of setting things up for its future as well, so.
So it'll be just under the Fire Department?
It'll be under the Fire Chief.
It's a Fire Chief.
Yep, because it has to be to a specific person.
Yes, it would have to be to you specifically as the Fire Chief.
What's the limit on it?
Well, I have a purchasing authority of $2,000, so.
Per transaction?
I don't know how that goes.
Is it per month?
It's per building cycle, mine's 2,500. You're up to, customer rate is a month, per month 2,500 on the credit card.
That's the same as Maggie's, right?
I believe so.
25. Quick motion then to approve a credit card for the Fire Chief.
I would, I, what?
Aye.
What was it?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Motion carries five over.
And then just an update from the Personnel Committee meeting, I'll have two proposals to present at the next Personnel Committee meeting, one for the opposite fan, the other for emergency management position, so.
The other concern that we have too, which is the street out here in front of the Fire Department, and getting that updated, I know we have that on the schedule, Sean, but the concern that we have is that the trucks can't pull out there onto the street, and I know that's a county road, but we need to look at that, so that if we're in the haste for the fire, that we don't end up damaging our trucks because they can't pull out onto the road, particularly the new engine, that can only use one door of the Fire Department because of the street condition there, so we need to move that up in our scheduling to get that repaired, and find out what it's gonna take.
And that's something that we're gonna grab stock with the Building Committee moving forward here, and hoping that's set up an initial meeting in June with the city staff and council that are involved in that, so.
It's gonna be a very minor improvement, because I'm not spending a whole lot of money to fix it, and then rip it up two years from now.
And we need to look at what we can do to mitigate that, to shorten it, it's a short-term effect, but a lot of work on it, so.
Thanks, Governor.
Thank you. Alright, Engineering.
Alright, Engineering Council, as our 14, 2016 City Council meeting, City Council asked staff to look at other cities and compare the costs of engineering services between cities, staff received feedback from nine other communities, that information is in the packet. And these communities were in the West Metro, four engineering organizations that were represented were Bolton Make, Stan Tech, Wink and WSB. I feel like the data in the packet provides valuable insight into the engineering costs for City of Montrose and neighboring communities. I mean, one thing that was a little difficult in analyzing the data is that every company labels their staff and costs kind of differently, if you, if you look at your packet. So, it's for you, in front of you today for further discussion.
Are those, are all Bolton Make?
Nope, there's, nope, there's Bolton Make on that page, there's just some features that seem.
So I explained the overall population, essentially, by others, and I did our real, all engineering.
Like I said, everybody charges differently, I don't know, that's just the information that they provided to me, and he's asking about Wink, so I don't know if they, it looks like they've kind of consolidated a lot of their, their positions into one section to kind of cut down on, so it looks like the engineer scientists that survey are under one section, and so I think what they did is they just kind of consolidated everybody into certain sections, so if you broke those up, then it would look like there were more positions.
But the reason why they're so low is because when they have the engineers coming out, whatever the project is or the developer is, they're the ones that pay the engineers.
They do here too. We charge our developers for engineering.
Yeah, but we have a lot of, no development going on, we still have a pretty empty bill.
Part of the bill that you get forward for tonight is, was charged out to developers and to the company that was doing the CUP, so it's, it gets charged out.
So the cost that we see reflected is literally all paid out, there doesn't?
Right.
We don't see the backend of that.
No, but it goes out on the last, next, like the last page of the accounts payable, I do put some of the stuff on there, and I think I have Millhosen on there, we've been charging the Solar Garden for their share, we've been charging for the Forest Creek, we've charged them their share, so. A lot of what, a lot of Bolton Make right now is the capital improvement plan that he's working on with Sean, that's a big charge, Justin, Sean have been doing that for a couple months already, or what, six months probably?
A lot of that's kind of down there too.
Oh yeah, big time.
Well, and that's where it gets tricky, is, I mean, Delano like has a one month where they're significantly lower than we are, we don't know what work they're, and they're doing, we physically have to go to the ask, because comfortably, comfortably, as far as the rate goes.
We've been working on a regional park for the last couple of years, which has been awesome. If you look at dollar for dollar by the hour, by the person charging out the hours, it's pretty much the same.
Yeah, the only big difference I noticed was that in between Bolton Make, Cokato, rates are way lower compared to the other three listed, including ours, and ours is way lower than, yeah, than even the other two, but I mean, I, I looked over this quite a bit, and our rates are fairly comparable with these other companies, comparing their.
We have not had an increase in rates from Bolton Make since we started with them, and we started in 1999, they've never increased their rates.
So unless Justin can give us rates like Cokato.
You've seen Cokato and Montrose are about the same size.
Yeah, I mean, that was the only, that was the only really big discrepancy. Yeah, but their rates are much higher.
These two are pretty good comparisons.
Which two are good comparisons?
What?
What two are good comparisons?
Cokato and Montrose deserve just about the same size, one's 2,900.
But, but I don't believe that ultimately rate is reflected by population, maybe the work that's done, so the end amount that's charged, because obviously with bigger population, you're gonna have more work to do, but I don't, you know, they're not gonna, just because, you know, Watertown has a thousand more people, they're not gonna charge them more, I, I think that's how they.
Well, if these are, they already, we used to do.
Not necessarily, they just might have a different contract.
85, 470, pardon, 20, inbound in Watertown, 470.
But it's all based on the contract that they, that go to.
Do we have, do we have a contract with Bolton Make?
No, no.
I don't think so.
Can I, can I explain? Try to explain the Coqueto and Montrose difference, Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Please do.
All right. A lot of it just varies on the person, the, the, the people or the staff that are assigned to each community. And we try to keep that somewhat consistent. And so things were labeled, they're always labeled a little bit different between even communities and between companies, but basically the, you know, if you look on, on my letter that I submitted, that's in your packet following the summary there, it's dated March 25th, 2016. I included a table on, that's on page 121 of your packet. The table there, and I included the bill dollars there on average for the past three, three years in sort of each category, just so you can kind of get a picture or get an idea of the, of the personnel or the services that, that are used most frequently in the city. So you can see most of the services are in that project slash design engineer category or in the city engineer category. So city engineer category is 120 to 140 for, for Bolton Make. And that's really applied in the, in the Coqueto one, you're in that, that basically that 120, eighty-five to 120. But you're really, it's, you know, the upper end of that 120, that's what I'm building at right now, I'm personally at 120. So it's really the same. And then design engineers are under. Technician, no, sorry. It would be under either. Project manager.
Well, all of them are on here. Look at the Coqueto one.
Yeah, that's, that's that one. I was looking for the Coqueto comparison, project design engineer. They're, they're basically all right in line. I don't know what that summary is trying to look like, Coqueto one here. Should be very similar.
So basically what you're saying is.
Yeah, they're able to project. If you look on the, on the sheet 132, is the Coqueto one. And the project design engineer is 64 to 144, that's the, the rate.
So what I'm understanding is that Coqueto.
And we're at 110, so we're right, right in the middle of Coqueto. We're, we're basically, it's all, it's all fitting them in the right categories, but they're, they're exactly the same. You know, obviously each, each category has varied levels of experience. So the more experience you have, the more efficient you can be with projects and the higher the rate is going to be. So that's why there's the range. Their licensed surveyor for Coqueto is 76 to 140. And we're at 1, 150.
So we could do a little fudgeing.
Pardon me?
We could do a little fudgeing there, huh? Negotiate, negotiate.
Well, based on the fact we haven't had a rate increase since 1999, is that correct?
I think that's when you started, was like 99 or 2000, 99 or 2000?
Oh, we started in 2001.
2001, oh.
Yep.
That was quite a while ago. And the difference in their rates is like $10 or $15 over 15 years. So it's.
Wendy, you remember who we had here for the book?
I don't know.
Frank Bruce. Westwood.
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 Westwood Engineering, I don't even know if they exist anymore.
I can't get a hold of them.
I don't think they're around anymore. And they were the engineers who did the first edition of Montrose Meadows. And then these guys came on after that.
Any credit? Going on the second street.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council on page 134 through 136 of your packet, there's a memo there. I did have a meeting with the, I reached out to the school district and the county. Had a meeting with the school district, invited the county, but they weren't, weren't able to attend. Really that my main goal was to talk to the school district about any concerns or issues that they have with that crosswalk. As well as get up-to-date information regarding school times next year and things of that nature. So I did summarize my meeting notes from, from the meeting of the school district and that memo there. Just real briefly, the school day, this year starts at 8:50 in the morning. Next year it will start at 7:45 a.m. Process right now is that the school district does provide a crossing guard in the morning hours. This year they provide it from 8:15 to 8:45 in the morning. And next year they provide it from 6:00, 7:15 to 7:45. So essentially about half hour prior to the school start. And then, and then once school starts, the crossing guard leaves. There's no crossing guard there at all, obviously during the day. One item they did mention is that, oh, I guess back in a second. When, when school is dismissed at the end of the day, there's a crossing guard that blocks students across the street, basically one time and then, and then the crossing guard leaves. But the school district did indicate that basically everybody leaves at one time. They don't allow anybody to cross the street after all, after school. They have to force everybody to sort of leave at that time. Somebody has to stay after school for, for some reason or another. They assist them across the street at that point. I did ask them what concerns they had, if any, regarding the crosswalk. They're listed there at the bottom of the memo on page 134. They did note crossing guards, noted that on occasion a vehicle does not stop at the crossing guard in the crossing the street. However, they said it's not, not a frequent occurrence. It's not a daily occurrence, maybe like that. They do notice it on occasion is what they said. I don't know how often exactly that is, but that's, that's their, that's what they mentioned. During the day, they said there are some reports of vehicles not yielding to pedestrians in the crosswalk, which is not uncommon for a crosswalk of any nature anywhere. They felt that the light lines in the intersection were somewhat low during the night or during the early morning hours. Many students that are coming late to school do not have a crossing guard. Sometimes they are escorted by their parents across, across the street, but sometimes they may not be if the student is walking to school. So that was a concern for them. Earlier start to school next year, there'll be more students crossing the street during low light times, either winter without a crossing guard. You know, if that school starts at 7:45 next year during the winter hours, that, that does definitely get into a lower layer, a little lower layer times of the day. Many drivers, they mentioned many drivers perhaps maybe don't even realize that it is a school crossing. The school is not visible from, from the road, so if you're not familiar with the area, driver may not realize it is a school near vicinity. With the early dismissal times, they were talking that perhaps more students might come back to the school grounds and they have to go to use the playground or the other outdoor areas at the school. The school district, you know, said that they encourage students to come back to the school or to use those facilities. And really in the white community, they see this, they said they see their, their grounds and the playground equipment as a community asset. They encourage people to use those facilities. So they thought, they didn't know for sure, but they thought maybe there'd be more, more people coming back than earlier dismissal time. Middle school, high school students also use the crosswalk for the bus pickup and drop off at the elementary school. There are no crosswires provided during that time. And I think the last thing I already covered. On the next page, there are 135. I just noted after, my review of the intersections, some, some items. Site distances are adequate in the intersection. There's good site distances both ways. The crosswalk signage is replaced with Minnesota Manual Traffic Control Devices, which is the, the signing. Doc, or the, the document, rules and regulations that, that regulate signs in Minnesota. They're relatively new and the retroreflectivity of the signs appears to be adequate. Crosswalk is painted, the markings have been maintained, they're visible. Excel Energy did replace the street light at the intersection, which now provides additional lighting at the crosswalk location.
Was that able to be focused on both sides of the street on that? I know having the light post on the west side of the street is not possible because of the, the building proximity there. But does that new lighting now focus light on both sides of the street?
It definitely provides additional lighting on both sides of the street, not necessarily both sides.
But not necessarily both, both walks.
Well, I.
It comes all the way across.
Yeah, I think it's, I think there's more lighting there on both sides of the road than what.
Than was before?
Yeah, yeah. And then I just noted that pedestrian ramps do not meet ADA requirements, which is consistent with all the other pedestrian ramps. Typically those get replaced or elevated when there's a project that goes through like a millimeter layer, thing of that nature. So considering the school times aren't changing, you know, quite a bit next year, one, one thing that you can consider to approve the crosswalk or, you know, to make additional improvements, there would be rectangular rapid flashing beacon crosswalk included in your packet. What that is, is it's a, it's a sign. It would replace the signs that are already on the crosswalk, so the sign is the same. Only difference is there's a, a rapid flashing beacon underneath the sign that flashes in an alternating wig wag pattern, which is similar to like the emergency vehicles. So it's kind of a, not like, almost like a scroll like, that, that little, or that, that pattern that's real, I guess not defined wig wag. The studies actually own that these, these RRFBs as they're called are fairly high compliance rates for people crossing the crosswalk. Studies show they're 80 to 90% compliant. There was one done across from a clinic facility. It's kind of a first prob, not a first prob, but there's a lot of research done on, done on it. It was in Burnsville. They actually noted a 95% compliance rate there. That's right across from a very busy medical facility. There was a lot of discussion going on with nurses, unions, and things of that nature. So they did a lot, a lot of study in that crosswalk. And it found, found that having success with them. So the school district was, I did sort of run this by the school district. They, they were in support of, in support of it. They were asking about funding of it. They did say they were going to review their budgets to see if they could fund a portion of the project. At that time, typically we've been these all previous sometimes with projects. And they typically have been coming in right around the 20,000 range, furnished and installed on both sides of the road. I did check and got it pulled correctly from the supplier, which is Papco. They can supply, we buy it directly from them. This is no installation included. But the solar option is about $9,000. So I think we could recognize that we've noted that a couple of other towns that they put them into. It seems like you can really save a lot of money by buying them directly and that could even solve yourself, so. You know, outside of, outside of that, I'm not sure Public Works would have all the funding needed to drive the pole or not. I haven't really, I'm giving Sean a chance to review this fully, so.
I think it's a fantastic idea.
And, and you guys be comfortable installing?
We certainly can give it a try.
Yep.
I do have a question also.
Sorry. Do we have to go through the county procedures since it's a county road?
We would have to apply for a, for a permit from the county. They have a crosswalk policy in place, so we have to apply. I don't suspect that would be an issue.
Next piece is budget funding.
I have one question, I'll quick. On this side of the road, on the west side of County Road 12? The current sign is on the north side of Second Street. How, where would we put this one?
I haven't reviewed it that close yet. We either put it in that same location or if we can, we try to stick it close by there by the, by the turnaround. But I think we might need to put it on the north side.
I was going to say, because in order to push the button, it's going to have to be on this side of the street.
Yeah, that's true.
With the crosswalks on this side, unless you can mold the button somewhere else.
Actually, yeah, but it's going to cost a lot more, so.
Well, if I find right by the spot where there's some.
Boy, can you put it on the south side?
Either that or.
Can we change the crosswalk on the south side?
That you change this crosswalk location to the south side.
You will not change crosswalk locations. The county is very, very strict on crosswalks that cross the road.
It's currently on the south side of Second Street because that's where the sidewalk is.
Sidewalk, yeah.
But there's no place to put the sign on the south side because of the building right there.
The building's right there. We'd have to put it close by the road there.
Couldn't you go on the sidewalk?
Well, you've got issues with.
Wheelchairs.
Wheelchairs and.
I, I think there's a little piece of bullet card there that I remember, if I remember correctly. Awesome. Just off of the crosswalk. Go on, get some heard there. Where are we having a budget on that one?
Well, we have not adjusted, so it would depend on, you know, if we could work 50/50 with the school and. There again, there is money in our general fund, if, you know.
Can we put that back in and then do general funding to pay back the streets?
Streets is part of our general fund.
Yeah.
Would we have this one or would we need two?
One on each side. Those prices include both. Yep.
Yeah.
Yep, that's all. Yep.
Oh, I thought it would be each.
No.
I, I didn't know that's proposed.
I thought it would be each.
So they split it as roughly $400, $500 and then whatever cost, you know.
If we need anything in the school.
Yeah, and then whatever cost we have to install it.
Are you going to proceed to work with the school?
Yeah, if that council desires. I told them I would review it with you guys and that I'd get back to them, so that's my next job.
I certainly think that based on the number of complaints we've had with that crosswalk, based on the fact we've got kids there, based on the fact we've had a serious accident there, that it warrants us doing something with it. Is there any, any further discussion on it until we move to the.
Is there any special funds?
You know, really the only thing probably that would be, would be the Safe House School Program, which, things on that have changed a little bit. That's an extremely competitive grant program. And now you basically have to do a planning document first before you apply for a grant. You have to apply for a grant to do the planning document, to do all this background research. Honestly, for, you'd spend more money doing all the requirements than you would put them in.
In your discussion with the school, did they, in, you know, in our notes here, they said that nobody really knows if there's a school there, you know, because it's kind of hidden. Got a sign there, that's on, what was that? Chandler property. I don't know what the address is.
The school sign?
Yeah. Did they talk about getting that completed? Because that was taken care of two years ago. To get that in there and get it done so that people know that there is a school there and.
Yeah, I agree with that. That's a, that's a good point. I saw that when I pulled up because I know it was a couple of years ago and I knew that up there. They were working on it then. They had got something up there, but they.
The poles are in, but they haven't put any other.
I'll ask them about it.
Well, I've also seen schools that are on main drags like this have lights flashing and then, you know, speed limit of 15 miles per hour when children are present, et cetera. And without of doing that.
We discussed that.
About county.
I think we discussed that, I think.
Right, you, you need to do this for the school.
Compliance on speed limits are a difficult thing. And sometimes when you get low compliance, you know, I've talked about that before, sometimes you're better off. Because you have false sense of security. And I, and I did get, I, you know, I did get really from what the school district is seeing out there, and I kind of rely a lot on them because they're the ones that are interacting correctly with the kids in their outdoor everyday. And they have to indicate that speed is an issue. And no matter what you do, no matter what colored light to install there, no matter how big of a thing you are, we take a half a million dollar fire truck out into that intersection, people still go.
Yeah, right.
So you can do whatever you want with the years. I think this is a great idea, don't get me wrong. But, you know, we have half a million dollar piece of apparatus over there with $10,000 worth of emergency lighting and people still don't yield to us, so. Eighty to 90% compliance rate.
Probably.
Something like that next to.
Then they'll, they'll go over that idea right after us.
Depends on what they, they'll go over that, he's right outside the front.
So, just something to remember about, you know, people are still going to go through it. You're still going to have issues, and those people are going to complain. That doesn't mean that it's not worth it.
We ready to move to a vote here, guys?
Can we, um-
I don't think putting a light down there is going to help anything. Because we were down there one morning watching the cars, and we even had a deputy down there, and people still zipping through that intersection, and deputies have lost case and people going across the river. But nobody was stopping for that intersection though. And even when the flag lady was out there that morning, people still were not stopping. They were going right out around her. It's a bad intersection, I don't know what problem, a light ain't going to help it as far as I'm concerned.
No, I think anything we can do to call attention to the fact that there's someone crossing there is, is good. I think that the biggest piece that we have to deal with is whether or not the vehicles are actually realizing that someone's crossing. And when you come from that side and there's, and it also helps pedestrians too, so they realize they have to press the button before they go across, which would help from anybody that is walking straight out from behind that building and steps right into the crosswalk. And so if they have to stop to press that button, that puts another safety factor, not only for the pedestrian, to give compliance with the pedestrian, but also to give another, another factor to warn those vehicles there as well. So I think we get too full out of putting the buttons in. Any other discussion? Have a motion?
I will make a motion to have Justin continue to work with the school at a 50/50 cost for the lighting intersection of Second Street.
How's that? Lloyd?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Oh, Michelle?
Aye.
I vote aye, motion carries by a vote. And Justin, if you're not able to get any funding for the school, let us know again and we'll make another decision while we figure out our cost. Okay? Okay.
Okay. For the engineering comparison, did you want an idea on what we're supposed to be, what direction you were supposed to be taking?
Um, yeah, was it-
Or were we just done with it? Or, I mean, what you gathered on the data, or are we just going to be like, all right, sounds good?
Yeah, I, I think the question at the March meeting was if we would go out for RFP and then the direction was to get more information. So I guess it's up to we decide, you know, based on that information, what we would like to see happen.
I think there's going to be discussion on what the next step is. She just gathered on the stat for us. Not a word.
Is there a motion to do an RFP?
I mean, I'm not against an RFP, but I just feel like I think everything's going to come in pretty much where we're at, especially now that we've seen comparisons.
And, and my concern is the mass that we're placing well on all the historical work that's there.
Yes, that is a-
That's a big piece.
We also have to take into consideration the hundreds of hours that Justin spends with staff that does not give a building.
Mm-hmm, I agree. My suggestion is to not go to an RFP at the time.
I'll make a motion to continue using Boldman make for engineering services.
Melissa?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
I vote aye. Lloyd?
Aye.
Motion carries by a vote, continue Boldman make as our engineer.
Sorry, who's second then?
Uh, that was Michelle. Thank you, council. You're welcome, sir. Okay, multi-hazard mitigation for natural hazards, I believe this one is.
Well, the, the document that was sent to me from Wright County was a multi-hazard mitigation plan. So it, it looks like, well, the resolution in front of you today is to adopt the Wright County Hazard Mitigation Plan. The plan, I believe, was started some years ago between other cities and districts within Wright County. Hazard mitigation is designed as any sustained action to reduce or eliminate risk to human life and property from hazards. So in order actually for us to receive funding, uh, we, we essentially as a city have to adopt the plan that we actually believe participated in with the county to develop. So this plan actually covers Wright County and the cities, including the city of Montrose. And I know Kevin participated and Brett participated, so if you need any additional questions, I think they would be able to answer them. Otherwise, the resolution in front of you tonight is just a resolution as a point.
The one that I attended, they updated, was just natural disasters, not man-made disasters. I don't know if they're retaining the same hazard for man-made disasters, so that will be a retention of this, the one that was created. They updated the natural disaster one.
They're one and the same, essentially. Biggest thing, for example, is if a tornado comes through town, wipes out all of our power poles, if we're part of this, there would be federal money available to bury them underground at that point. If we don't participate in this, because that's something that we submitted to that hazard mitigation plan is, hey, we realize that that's a problem, the problem is it's too expensive. So if a tornado comes, wipes them out, all we're going to get back if we're not part of this plan is power poles that, how they are today. But then part of this, then the federal money starts kicking in and, hey, we start putting these things in.
That also needs to be something that we add in our comp plan and in our CIP. It doesn't mean that we have to put it in to be completed, but we have it on as a planned item. So it has to be on the CIP and the, and the comp plan as something that's a planned item, but cost prohibitive at this time. In order to get the funding. Any other discussion? Motion approved 2016-11.
I'm going to motion to approve Resolution 2016, Act 11.
Second?
One second.
Jill?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
I vote aye. Lloyd?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Motion carries by a vote of 2016-11. Any, the new, uh, upcoming meetings?
Okay, upcoming meetings are the personal meeting on Monday, May 16. Economic Development Authority Special Meeting, what in the state, May 18 at 6:00 p.m. And Planning Commission Meeting, May 18 at 7:00 p.m.
And then May 23rd, we have the union negotiations as well. And the Memorial Day event will be May 3rd. Should be approximately, uh, May 3rd, excuse me, May 3rd. Approximately 10 o'clock, I believe, is when that should be, I don't have a final on that. Anything further?
I just have one person under acknowledgement, it's a resident. His name is Jim Dernan. He lives across the street from the community center. We want to acknowledge him for noticing and putting out the fire in the garbage can at the community center. Without him, probably we would have gotten way more damage than we did.
Absolutely. We're very lucky on it. Why, it was business.
Do we have our business to why or how that started? Not that I think there's, I, I think there's speculation.
I don't think there's any concrete there.
No.
No. Um, again, I'd like to recognize, and without Public Works, and the resourceful use of our new truck for the chemical spill that we had. So that was fantastic. Without the new truck that we had, that would have been significantly more costly. And so it was very creative for John to be able to put that truck into play and make it work to our bend. So I appreciate that. Also, I'd like to recognize Justin Tanis for donating his winnings on the Rubber Duck Rattle back to Beyond the Yellow Ribbon. So even though I pulled his name, he wrote it right back in the fight, fight, and go back to Beyond the Yellow Ribbon. So we appreciate that.
Um, I want to acknowledge Kyle Anderson for planting like apple trees in our parks and Public Works for cleanup day this much weekend. I understand they're very busy and, um, a lot of work.
Record here.
Yeah, that's what I'm hearing, so.
And also Public Works for the cleanup on the benches and in the parks. They were really good, they did a nice job on it. Even on the rocks, the rocks were fantastic. A great job with, with all of that.
I would like to further recognize Justin for all the work he's done on the regional park project with the Army. It's going to save the city at least a half million dollars. So he's done a lot of work in keeping this thing moving forward and, and done a very good job doing it.
Agreed.
Agreed, thank you, Justin.
Any further? Motion to adjourn? Second?
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?